Nachotaka niwe, niwe wetu. Nachotaka niwe, niwe wetu. Haja ya moyo wangu, Yesu tu. Haja ya moyo wangu, Yesu. Nachotaka, nachotaka niwe, niwe wetu. Nachotaka niwe, niwe wetu. Haja ya moyo wangu, Yesu. Haja ya moyo wangu, Yesu. Nachotaka niwe, nachotaka niwe, niwe wetu. Nachotaka niwe, niwe wetu. Haja ya moyo wangu, Yesu. Haja ya moyo wangu, Yesu. Kama yala atafuta vyomaji. Za edia odongo mkavu, onavyo kewa tonela maji. Ilivyomoyo wangu, nisibo shiriki nawe. Olivyomoyo wangu, nisibo semana we. Kama samaki, njeha bahari. Sina uhai, njeha hemayako. Nilowe she, kwaroho mikudue. Surayako ngahe uso ni mwangu. Nataka nikothomi kie, kwan guvupia. Ke secho weze kana, niweze she. Napopungokewa, nineme she. Nakweteji Yesu. Oh, nachotaka niwe. Nachotaka niwe, niwe wetu. Nachotaka niwe. Nachotaka niwe, niwe wetu. Haja ya moyo wangu, Yesu. Haja ya moyo wangu, Yesu. Nachotaka niwe. Nachotaka niwe, niwe wetu. Nachotaka niwe, niwe wetu. Haja ya moyo wangu, Yesu. Haja ya moyo wangu. Haja ya moyo wangu, Yesu. Nachotaka niwe. Nachotaka niwe, niwe wetu. Nachotaka niwe, niwe wetu. Haja ya moyo wangu, Yesu. Haja ya moyo wangu, Yesu.
Good evening and praise God viewers. We thank God for this wonderful opportunity. It is indeed another wonderful day that the Lord has given to us. I want to welcome you for our Berean Bible study this evening. And we want to continue. And before we continue, we just want to do an introduction and then we shall pray so that we may begin. My name is Pastor Peter Shikuku and in turn Pastor here at GCI Central. Welcome, let me have my panelist speak.
Buonasifive. My name is Ernest Chirchir. I'm born again, a member of GCI Central. And would like to welcome all of our viewers wherever you are. Karibuni sana, let's take a journey together. We study the Word of God, karibuni sana.
Amen.
Good evening and praise Jesus. The Lord is good. I thank God for this day. My name is Fibian Mutio, a member of GCI Central. Feel welcome.
Amen, thank you once again, our dear viewers. Let me ask my brother Ernest to lead us in our word of prayer.
Okay, let's pray. Father, in the name of Jesus, we come before you this evening. Lord, we thank you for what you have done for us Jehovah Father. Lord, tonight as we are going to study your word, Father, I pray, I pray, Father, that may you stand with us. May you give us, Lord, the knowledge that is coming from you, Lord. Thank you even for our listeners wherever they are. I pray for them, Lord, that may you help them understand, Lord, what we are going to discuss, Lord. Father, in Jesus' name, as we are going to start this program, I pray, Lord, that may you stand with us. May you start with us and at the end of it, Lord, we will remember to thank you. I pray this believing and trusting in the mighty name of our Lord Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen, amen. Thank you once again, our dear viewers. We have been going through a journey of looking at the book of Revelation. That began around three weeks ago. We have been looking at the seven churches to which Jesus Christ wrote a letter to. And today we are going to look at the fifth church. And that is the church of Sardis. I want to ask us, we are going to read. And let me ask brother Ernest to start us off in the chapter, in the third chapter.
Okay, I'm going to read Revelation, chapter number three, verse number one. And the Bible says to the angel of the church inside his right. These are the words of him. Who holds the seven, the seven spirits of God, of God and the seven stars. I know your deeds, you have a reputation of being alive, but you are dead. Wake up, strengthen what remains and is about to die. For I have not found your deeds complete in the sight of my God. Can I continue?
Okay, verse three says, go back to what you had and believed at first. Hold to it firmly, repent and turn to me again. If you don't wake up, I will come to you suddenly as unexpected, as a thief. Continue.
And you will not know at what time I'll come to you. Verse four, yet you have a few, a few people in Sardis who have not soiled their clothes. They will walk with me dressed in white for they are worth. He who overcomes will like them be dressed in white. I will never blot out his name from the book of life, but will acknowledge his name before my father and his angels. He who as I'm here, let him hear what the spirit says to the churches.
Amen. Amen. We are looking at the church of Sardis. That is the, the fifth church as far as the letters are concerned. And from what we've read, the introduction of this particular church. It is still about the letter to the angel of the church in Sardis. And the message is from the one who has the seven spirit of God and the seven stars. I remember as we introduced about the churches, we talked about Jesus Christ being the one holding the seven, sevenfold spirits and also the seven stars. And in this case, the church, the letter is addressed to the church of Sardis. And there are a number of things that have been addressed here and that is the one, the things that we want to look at. So to give you the background of the church of Sardis, just to have understanding of the background. The letter of the Sardis church is the fifth of a series of brief letters to the seven churches that we see in Asia Minor that existed during Apostle Jones' time. Today, we call that place modern Turkey. Sardis was one of the oldest, wealthy and best defended cities in the region. So for us to understand much about this particular city of Sardis. We have said that it is, it was one of the oldest wealthy. Apart from being wealthy, it was also best defended in the region. Specific information of the churches in, in Sardis. So I want to bring my panel so that we find out what are some of the issues that were addressed in these letters? What are some of the things that the letter is speaking about to the church? Is there anyone ready?
Okay, maybe I can, I can, I can say, what, what the letter is addressing is that these people, most of the people who are in this church, they were religious people. They had actually abandoned the faith. And they were just in charge, but not doing what was expected of them. And still that is what, that is what is happening at the present church. But they were warned and they were told that they need to do some certain things. If they had, if, if, if they were to continue being Christians and doing the work of God. They needed to do some things, some certain things that Christ is warning them. And we are going to take a journey. We are going to see what these things they were told to strictly follow. So that they could conform to the, to the right standard of the Bible.
Amen, amen, thank you brother. You've talked about abandoning faith, this, this is a church that abandoned faith. My sister Fibian, could you have something as far as the introduction part of this church of Sardis is concerned?
Yeah, we, we see, we see Jesus encouraging the church to wake up. That means they, they were sluggish in whatever they were doing, especially in their spiritual lives. And that is something we need to look at as believers today, thank you.
Amen. So I want to say that Jesus condemns the lifeless state of the Sardian church. This is, this church was lifeless in terms of the commitment and the services of God. And we are saying that being a lifeless church, Jesus addressed it and was condemning it. When we look at chapter one and verse B, if I may read, the Bible says that, I know all the things you do. And that you have a reputation, a reputation for being alive, but you are dead. When I look at that word, it, it has a lot of weight. Because first Jesus is acknowledging that he appreciates. And he knows the work this church is doing, their reputation. I believe each and everyone in life wants a reputation. The church of Christ should have a reputation. And Jesus is acknowledging, acknowledging as far as the church of Sardis is concerned, that they had a good reputation. But again, he's telling them, but you are dead. The church may have had a good reputation, but was spiritually lifeless. Maybe had unsaved people, just religious. You know, it is something that we find in the church today, that we have people not born again, but very religious. And this is something that we need to relate with what we have today. Could we be with people in the church with reputations, but are dead in terms of faith? Mister Ernest?
Yes, that is still practical. We have people who are practicing what we call self-rashiousness. They are in charge just to be seen and to be heard. But if you look behind the scenes, you will realize that this person is not actually following what the Bible is telling us. Cause as a church, we need to be scriptural, we need to, to stick to the boundaries that we have been given. And this church failed in a number of issues, in a number of things they were doing. They were always outside the boundary that Christ has given us. They were playing on the opposite direction. And that is still what we have in the present church. And as believers, we need to be very careful. This is a warning that we have. And we never know why the Lord is directing us to go through these letters. Maybe there is somebody listening to us tonight and you are not living right. You have to study this, this, this book and see the promises that we have been given as believers. That is what I can say.
Thank you Fibian.
Yes, I would like to add, when you, you look at that word dead. I think I, I have in mind three kinds of death. The first death is physical death. The second one, the spiritual death. And I'm thinking of the third one, the second death. When we, we, we get born again, the, the Bible says that we will not have the second death as Christians. So I'm looking at this verse that they were alive, but they were dead. Between these three deaths, what, what was the kind of, what can be the kind of death? They may be experiences, experiencing, sorry.
Okay, thank you very much. I think I'll answer your question and then we can also hear from my brother. You've talked about three types of death. When the Bible is talking about, you have a reputation for being alive, but you are dead. I think the letter is addressing the spiritual death, the status of the church, the spiritual status of the church.
Yeah, I, I think so too, that they were alive physically, they were alive. That is where Jesus was addressing to them. And they had not come to the last one, which is the second death. So I think Jesus was addressing about the spiritual death. And it's not easy to know someone who is spiritually dead. Unless the word of God reveals that, unless you are convicted in this matter, we need to change. So as Christians, we need to look at ourselves and be able to find out, are we spiritually alive? That is what I can say.
A very good question to all of us, viewers and even to us. Are we spiritually alive or we are spiritually dead? This is happening in the church. And what we are trying to talk about and we are emphasizing is that we are talking about a spiritual death. I know that we are in charge and I know that we are worshiping God. I know that we are committed in many ways. But the question is, how is your spiritual status as a child of God or as a believer? Could you be alive, able to wake up every morning on Sundays? And even other mornings just to wake up, to come to the church and even to pray in your house? But that does not still give you that, the, the, the life in the salvation. So that is something that you need to find out.
Pastor Shikuku, if I may, you know, we are talking about being spiritually alive. What are, what does this mean? Cause we can say, you are physically alive, you are spiritually alive. And we don't explain what this means. This means like according to me, what I, what I understand is, do you have a relationship with Christ? And is that relationship life? Can you talk to the Lord in prayer? Do you understand the word of God? Are you walking right with God? So it's not something complicated with the way we are saying, are you spiritually alive? You may be wondering, what is being spiritually alive? It's just making your relationship with Christ so, so life that you can talk to him, you can read the word of God.
Sure.
That is what I, yeah, that is what I wanted to add, thank you.
Okay, from that point, before brother Ernest speak, you know, as human beings, for us to be physically alive. There are a number of things we need, we need food, we need to eat food. And you find that we eat food from morning, lunch break and evening. And these are some of the things that we trust or we treasure so much in order to make us healthy. When we are talking about spiritual, spiritually alive, what are some of the things that we need to do? To make sure that our relationship with Christ remains to be strong and alive? And one of the things that she is saying and we want to ask us, that we need to read the word of God. We need to read the word of God. Word of God is one of the delicacies that make us, our, make our spiritual life to, to be alive. So that anytime we know what the word of God says, you know, it's very wrong just to depend maybe on the motivational books as we have been saying and other inspirational books to keep our spiritual, spirituality alive. One of the greatest food we need to eat is the word of God. Then these daily prayers, daily prayers, we don't need to be people or believers who only pray when we are in troubles, when we have some things that are so pressing us or when we are in need. We should be praying always, always, prayer of thanksgiving, prayer of confession, prayer of repentance, all types of prayers. So that even as we, as we ask, we do the prayer of asking, we know very well that we have other prayers to do. So thank you for that elaboration. Could you be having something, my brother, to add?
Maybe to add on that is that, living right with Christ is actually a personal choice. It's not about mob psychology, that maybe my parents or my father or my friends are born again. So you just want to, to hang around that and say that you are born again. This is a personal experience, you need to experience that, that personal touch with Christ for you to have it. So maybe, maybe, maybe to add on that is that, living right is actually a good thing to do. Cause if you read what the Bible is saying, in that church, there are people who are living right within the church of Sardis. And Christ gave them a very good commendation. And even us today, those of us who are living right, those of us who are living as by the word of God. We can still get these commendations from Christ himself. So my encouragement to all of us is that, let's stand and stand firm, no matter what the situation. Cause the prevailing conditions in this church was so, was so toxic that anomaly, you could not expect to find somebody living right with Christ. But what we, what, what we are told is that there were people there, they were believers there. Who was still doing the right thing and preaching, reaching out to the others. And that is what we can still do, even in our present, our present days. Where being a Christian now is very costly. So my challenge to you is that, are you living right? Are you that, are you spiritually alive? That should be the challenge that we need to take moving forward.
Amen.
Thank you very much. I want to have a very simple question to all of us, including myself and every listener. How is your relationship with God? Does the image you present really reflect the Christ life, the Christ-like life that you need to live? Or could you be just living as a Christian, showing a good show to your friends, your family members? And my brother is talking about some of us that are holding on to salvation, maybe to please our parents. These are some of the things that we need to know. Because when we understand this, we will understand that there is a personal need or a personal responsibility to be spiritually alive. So I want us to continue. And I'm looking at verse two, I'm looking at verse two of this chapter three. The Bible says, wake up, strengthen what little remains. For even what is left is almost dead. I find that your actions do not meet the requirements of my God. What a word. What could you be, what understanding do you have towards this? Because Christ is calling them to wake up, yes Fibian?
I'm just on the last part about the requirements of God. And I'm wondering, what are these requirements? Cause if we're talking about requirements, that means there are requirements or there are certain things. There's a certain place God wants us to meet. That is what I'm thinking from the requirements, you are not meeting the standards. And I think the standard is what the word of God says. You know, he's talking about deeds. And when, when I remember about the Pharisees, there were people who could follow the word of God to the latter. Their actions. And I remember Jesus says, if we, we should do more than the Pharisees. That means there are some things God wants us to do. And one is serving him, is our prayer life, the way we have said, the, the, reading the word of God. And is the only one, you know, we can do events. And in this church, that means maybe there are events. But they were not meeting the standards. So let us reflect on those standards, that is what I can say.
Amen.
Reflect on the standards of God.
Amen. Could you be having something, brother?
Maybe what I can add is that the standard that we have is actually what we have in the word of God. There are boundaries that we, we are not allowed to cross as believers. And these people were being encouraged or they were being warned that if you need to, you need to stick to the standards. And the standards are actually specifications, specifications. When they talk about specifications and you bring something that is not of that standard, then that one will be rejected. So rejection was so eminent in this church that, that the Lord himself had to remind them that there are requirements. And some of the requirements is what my sister and my brother Shikuku has actually talked about. That we need to, to actually submit and understand our boundaries as believers.
Amen. Again, what stands out for me in this particular verse. I'm looking at Christ who condemns the church after realizing where the mistake is. But he doesn't leave the church there. He is offering a solution, he's calling the church to wake up. That is a great call. Jesus is calling the church of Sardis, wake up, strengthen what little remains. So there, there, there are some of us could be at the verge of just becoming spiritually what? Dead. But Christ is offering what? A solution. And that solution that Christ is offering, there is a personal responsibility to wake up and make sure that I strengthen, because what is left is what? What is left is so little. So we don't need to have what is left, even getting, ending. So this is a wake up call even to the church today, dear listeners and even to all of us. How is your faith in Christ? Sometimes when you are born again, you had a very strong faith in Christ. You were reading Bible so much, you could, a day could not pass without you reading the word of God. You were praying so much, you loved to have a fellowship with brethren. So you are people who are meeting, that is where you wanted to be. But as life continued, though you kept the reputation of being born again, but you are dead in spirit. There is good news for you. And the good news is that, wake up, wake up. That is what Jesus Christ is calling us. Jesus calls them to repent of their sins. Now wake up, strengthen what little remains, for even what is left is, is at the point of death. Your deeds are far from right in the sight of God. And, and this other version, it says, I find that your actions do not meet the requirements of my God. Are your actions meeting the requirements of God? Are my actions meeting the requirements of God? Yes Fibian, I can see.
Sorry, sorry to cut you short.
Yes.
Yeah, my actions meeting the requirements of God. You know, sometimes we want to meet the requirements of men. And I'm looking at it like this. Am I making my leader happy in the ministry? Am I looking at my pastor and I'm saying, whatever I've done is, the pastor is happy? Like in us here Bible study. Are we looking at Pastor Joyce and we are looking at, oh, we've met her requirements. Whatever she, she, she has told us to do, we have done it. So that really caught my mind. So, uh, that really caught my attention. Are we meeting the requirements of God? Not of man, not of church. Yes, we are supposed to meet these requirements we are given, but looking, uh, at them from the eyes of God.
Amen.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes. And from that your point, uh, Sister Fabian, I want to say that as a believer, if I'm truly, my actions are truly meeting the requirements of God, I think there is no any other standard beyond God. So when they meet the standard of God, already are meeting the standard of men. So we need to work in our faith so as to meet the standard of God. Let your action and my action as a believer, uh, be actions that meet the standard of God. And with this as a church, we shall be spiritually alive. And, uh, moving forward, something also stands out in this church, you know, we are looking at this church generally. But I want us to look at verse four. What is verse four saying? Uh, if someone could read it?
Okay, let me read.
Okay.
It says, yet you have a few people in Sardis who have not soiled their clothes. They will walk with me, dressed in white, for they are worthy.
Wow. What do you understand with that particular, uh, uh, verse? That as much as Jesus is speaking to the entire church, within that church, there were some. There were some people. Some of the believers in Sardis stood firm even when others were falling away. Verse four, some who have not soiled their garments. Am I one of the some in the church? Are you one of the some? Because the reputation, or the, the, the reputation was kept by all. The, um, the, the comment that Jesus made from the beginning, he was speaking to the whole church. Trying to tell them that you are spiritually dead. But again, looking keenly, Jesus saw that there were a few members of Sardis who stood firm in their faith, even when others were falling away. So what I understand with this particular portion of the word of God is that even when others fall away of the faith, there are people who can stand out. And I want to be that particular person who is standing out. I think, uh, I must have shared this with some people. And it came out so strongly when we were having a commissioning of the graduation that took place for the PAX students yesterday. That when people are seated, stand up. And when people are standing up, stand out. And when people are standing out, be outstanding. And what if they become outstanding? Be more outstanding. And as believers, I think what we are needed to do is to be more outstanding in our faith. When we become more outstanding in our faith, I believe we are going to be among these some, among these some who are not going to, uh, go against the faith. We shall stand firm, we shall defend the faith. We shall walk in righteousness, we shall keep holiness as God's children, because we are serving a holy Christ. How do we serve a holy Christ and yet we are, our garments have been dirt, uh, dirtified? So when, yes, Sister Fabian?
Thank you, thank you. Hope I didn't cut you short. Uh, I'm, I'm just happy because God always has remnants. He doesn't wipe away everyone. He, he has people who always, you look at it, uh, and you're like, I, I, I just remembered when Elijah was running from prophet, Elijah from the Old Testament, on the Old Testament. When he was running away and he says, God, I'm the only one. And God told him, there are other people who have not soiled themselves, who have not worshipped Baal. And it's just here, it's just a confirmation that the God we are serving is the same God, the Holy Testament, the Israelites we are serving. Is a faithful God. And, uh, if we kept remnants then and is promising, he is saying to this church, there are still remnants, that there is a God who keeps remnants. And if you are willing, hold on there. And be that remnant in the church and in the body of Christ. Thank you.
Okay. Amen. Um, for me, this is a very, um, a very positive statement from, 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 from the, from the Church of Sardis. And, uh, it reminds me that, uh, even during the days of the Old Testament, there was, there, there was this man who was living in Sodom. His name is Lot. And the man actually pleased God. This is somebody when people were participating in every, uh, activity that was taking place in that place. This man stood and he was able to, 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 to actually survive the toxic environment. And, uh, when it was time for that city to be destroyed, God remembered him. And this one also is an encouragement to us, that wherever you are, it doesn't matter what is happening. It doesn't matter the environment. It doesn't matter what people are doing. What matters is your heart and knowing that you are serving the living Lord, the living God. And you have to do. And, uh, it's an encouragement that us, we can still have some few people standing. Me and you, wherever you are, can you be that person, that person who will stand and be counted out? It's nice to be counted out, that so and so has actually stood. And, um, there's, there's a reward for that. God bless you.
Amen. Thank you very much. Uh, dear viewers, these are heavy matters, heavy stuff. But they are meant to build us and to make us spiritually alive. When you read the word of God and you understand that as much as the church was spiritually, uh, dead, there are people who could still be counted. And I love as the, the, uh, the verse is coming to an end. Jesus, yeah, the letter is addressing and saying, they will walk with me in white, for they are worthy. We can still walk with Christ when we become worthy. So I want us to move on. I, I want us to look at, uh, verse five. And verse five says, all who are victorious will be clothed in white. I will never erase their names from the book of life. But I will announce before my Father and his angels that they are mine. Wow. Yes, my brother.
Wow, that is what I love. That verse number five is what has actually, that, that is the, the verse that stood out for me. That, uh, he who overcomes will like them be dressed in white. I will never blot out his name from the book of life. Uh, there's a danger there, that if you don't work right, if you don't do the right thing, your name can be blotted out. And that is something very dangerous, cause you can be, you, you, you can be a Christian for more than thirty years. And then you just, you mess up in maybe a day and your name is blotted out. And you miss out in that, uh, citizenship. Uh, I, I came recently to, to understand the importance of being a citizen of a country. I was in a neighboring country some few days ago. And I realized that, uh, having citizenship is something very important. Wherever you go, somebody will demand, where's your passport? Where is your COVID certificate? Where is this and this? But when I'm around in my country, nobody even asked me of my ID. So you have something. We are citizens of heaven and it will be very bad for you and me to miss out, to be blotted out and lose that citizenship that Christ has given us. So let's be, uh, let, let's wake up, let's wake up. Let's take up the challenge of retaining our citizenship.
Hmm, yeah. Okay, um, it is so, um, encouraging just to learn that Jesus is now making a promise. There is a promise that has been made. And the word of God does not talk about some. In fact, it is now inclusive, even to those who were spiritually dead and they were told to wake up. If they wake up, and even this who are still remaining in white gown or white garment. So Jesus is making a promise and saying that all who are, all who are victorious will be clothed in white. And I will never erase, Jesus is emphasizing, he will never erase their names from the book. And you have talked about the, the, the benefits of being a citizen. We are citizens of heaven. Our names have been written. And Jesus Christ is confirming and affirming that the names will not be erased. So what do we need to do? We have to remain in righteousness. We have to re- stand out as Christians in our Christian walk. I need to stand out even when the environment becomes toxic with sin. That I can still stand out in order to enjoy a token of righteousness that Jesus Christ has promised, that we shall be dressed in white garment. If we remain to be righteous, or if we remain to walk with Christ. So Fabian, could you be having something?
Yes, I am looking at the last part of that verse and it says, but will acknowledge his name before my Father and his angels. So God, Jesus will not be ashamed to say the names of those or, uh, to just present the names of those who overcome.
Sure.
So we should not make the, our Lord ashamed to present us before the Father.
We should not make our Lord ashamed to present us before the Father. That should be your desire. That now that your name is in the book of life, you are a believer. You should not make our Savior Christ be ashamed on the last day. Because he will acknowledge your name. He will acknowledge you before God the Father and even his angels. So as we come to the, to the tail end of this particular Church of Sardis, we've been talking about Church of Sardis, uh, dear viewers. And for those who are joining us, we've been looking at, um, how Jesus, uh, is addressing the church that had a reputation but was spiritually dead. And even when there was such kind of a case, there are people who stood out and were still clothed in white. And we, we have also seen how Jesus is, um, uh, talking about a promise that for those who overcome, for those who become victorious, we need to become victorious in faith and we need to overcome in faith. Uh, verse six says something, uh, I need us to look at verse six because it is the last verse. And then we look at some few lessons we can learn and then we just bring this to an end. Verse six says, anyone with ears to hear must listen to this, uh, to the Spirit and understand what he is saying to the churches. Anyone with ears. So it is a wake up call and the word anyone here is, uh, is, is, is an inclusive word. Even for them who feel like they are spiritually dead, there is something that they can do in order to rise up again in faith and be counted among the righteous, uh, the righteous. And that their names shall also be acknowledged before God the Father and God, uh, and his angels. So my brother, um, Ernest, we would really want to bring it to an end. But before we bring it to an end, what do you understand by verse, uh, verse six? And something before you talk, you realize that at the tail end of every letter to this particular churches, anyone with an ear is being called upon. Yes.
Um, maybe to echo what you are saying is that, uh, the spirit is, uh, the spirit is, um, talking to the church. The spirit is telling the church that, uh, we cannot obtain righteousness without faith in the spotless sacrifice that Christ made. So as believers, we need to, to know our way, we need to listen to this, we need to act on this and do the right thing. And doing the right thing means, um, you obey, you repent. If you have not been working right with Christ, just do it, because that is what the spirit is telling us, that, uh, he who has an ear, let him hear what the spirit says to the churches. And the churches is actually the modern church, the church that we are in. So believers, wherever you are, please listen to these words, do the right thing and shine for Christ. Amen.
Amen. Uh, Sister Fabian, could you be having something?
On, on that, on that verse, uh, I, I can emphasize on obedience to the Spirit of God. You know, sometimes the Holy Spirit, uh, speaks to us and, uh, maybe, I don't know, we ignore. Or, uh, there, there, there's a scripture which says we quench the spirit. So let us not quench the spirit. Let us hear what the Spirit of God is saying to us and let us obey.
Amen. So we would really want to bring this to an end. And, um, dear viewers and all of us, some of the related verses that can help us to understand how can we stand out. If you look at the book of Ephesians, chapter one, the Bible is talking about as a prisoner for the Lord, then I urge you to live a life worthy of the calling you have received. Paul is speaking to the Church of Ephesians. Again, he speaks to the Church of Colossians, chapter one and verse ten, telling them, then the way you live will always honor and please the Lord. And your lives will produce every kind of good fruit. All the while, you will grow as you learn to know God better and better. Wonderful verses that can help you to know that you can walk as a believer. In first Thessalonians, chapter two and verse twelve, that ye would walk worthy of God, who hath called you upon his kingdom and glory. There is a possibility that we can walk as God's children. We want to bring it to a closure. And, um, I want, I want to bring my panelists just to give, uh, their final take as far as the letter to the Church of Sardis is concerned. Let's start with you, my brother, Ernest.
Um, maybe my closing remarks on this church is that, um, um, we need to, 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 to work hard. We need to do, to carry out our mandate as believers. And, uh, Christ is coming. There is judgment that is there, that the church was promised that the person who will not listen to this, there is something that will happen. And I believe that, uh, those people, they, they face that judgment. They are waiting, they are now waiting for that judgment to come, those who did not respond. So it's our, i- it's now high time for us to respond to this call and do as per what the word of God is telling us as believers. God bless you.
Amen. Yes, Sister Fabian?
Uh, as we close, I want to read verse three. Remember therefore what you have received and obey it and repent. And I don't want to finish, I just want to speak about the, uh, look at where you are fallen and repent. That is what I can say. If you feel, if, uh, when we have just talked, you feel there is somewhere you're not right with God, look and just turn back. God is so faithful and, uh, is so loving to forgive us. Be blessed.
Amen. God is so faithful and loving to forgive us. Um, as we bring it to an end, dear viewers, I want to say that the believers who stand firm in their faith will be rewarded accordingly. It is possible with, it is possible with God's help to stand firm, even when everyone around us is falling away. We don't have to follow the crowd. We can follow God instead as we do. He will bless us and write our names in the book of life. We can stand out. We don't have to follow the crowd, the pleasures of the world, the toxic environment of sin that has surrounded us. We can choose to follow God. And as, as we just bring it closer, first John five four, the Bible says, for everyone born of God overcomes the world. This is the victory that has, uh, that has overcome the world, even our faith. So we can overcome the world. We can outstand. We can be this, among these some who stood amongst the Sardis church. So I want to remind us of our services. And then we shall pray even to someone who has not given their lives to Christ. Our services as GCI Central are free on Sundays. The first one begins at seven thirty, second one begins at nine thirty, and the last one begins at, um, eleven thirty. We also have our family service that normally happens at eight, that, uh, uh, from eight to nine thirty every Sunday. So please join us and our Sunday services are still on, on our YouTube channel. Uh, we have a sister uni- uh, YouTube channel for the Sunday School. You can log in and just be blessed and also just, uh, for your children to access the living word of God. Do join us every Tuesday, physically here in church and even online as we do the prayers. Join us every Thursday, uh, both here in church and online as we do Bible study. If you have not given your life to Christ, this is a wonderful opportunity that you could make a date with God. And even if you are born again and you feel like you are, you have a reputation of being born again, but you are spiritually dead, you can make a date with God tonight. Let's pray. Father God, we want to say thank you. You have spoken to us through the Church of Sardis. We look at a church that had reputation but spiritually dead. But God, even as you address this church, you could still see that there were some amongst them who kept the faith, who did not God get a, a Who did not God get lured into the world and they stood firm? Lord, there is someone who is listening. There is a man and a woman who has looked at their spiritual work with you and they are actually dead. But God, you have offered a solution that when we can stand out, Lord, our names shall be written and they will not be erased. And that God will acknowledge us before God and his angels. This is our desire as a church, that further we shall stand out even when the world is compromised. And many believers are compromising faith, that God, we shall not compromise faith. Remember every man and every woman who has made a confession tonight and has repented that God, their name shall be added into their book of life. God, we pray, my Father, that may we be clothed with a white garment as we walk the journey of faith. We thank you for speaking to us through this particular letter to the Church of Sadducees because God, we feel transformed. And we thank you for every listener, we thank you for the body of Christ and we thank you for everyone who is going to interact with this word. Lord, that we shall be clothed with a white garment. We thank you, in Jesus' mighty name, do we pray, believing and trusting. Amen. Shalom, shalom. God bless you.
Hello viewers, thank you so much for tuning in today. It's our prayer that you have been nourished and edified. Remember, this service is not complete without giving. To do so, use our pencil payable number eight four four six three two. Account number, offering, or type, or shipfold redemption, or any other. You can also use our Equity Bank account number, one zero eight zero two nine six eight four nine five three eight. Account name, Nairobi Gospel Centre International. In need of prayers, counseling or inquiries, reach out to us on zero seven two five two five five nine four one or zero seven three four six six two five seven seven. May our good Lord richly bless you and keep you. May he cause his face to shine upon you now and forevermore.